Okay, hello. Good evening, everyone. I've got a call to order. The zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, September 18th at the Lakeville Public Library. Our first agenda item is the Patel hearing. Lakeville zoning boards of appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Dash Patel. Special permit is requested under Section 270 6.1(c) and Section 277.4 to construct a 200-square-foot addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Property site is 90 Main Street and is owned by Arben K. Patel. Application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the planning department. Okay. Who's here to represent? Come on up. Pick a seat, anyone. You've got four of them to choose from. Okay, do me a favor, just slide that mic a little more towards you, Jose, I want to take care of that. Just so everyone can hear. So, all right, why don't you tell us what you're doing and then I'll read a few memos into the record. Tell us what you're looking to do.
We want to like, this is a very tiny house. We want to like add this, like 200 square foot and like, we have one bedroom right now. I want to add one more.
Okay, so you want to add a 200-square-foot addition to put a second bedroom?
Yeah, and one like small office thing.
Okay, so the 200 square feet is going to encompass bedroom and office or just?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. All right. For the record, I'm going to read in some memos that we received from other boards and departments. From the Board of Health, dated September 11th, Board of Health has received the petition for 90 Main Street and the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed addition to the dwelling. Any further questions, contact the office. We also have a memo from the planning board dated September 16th. At their Thursday, September 11th meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board has no comments regarding this petition. So, we basically are looking to, because of the size of the property, you need to be here before us to ask to put the addition on. I don't have any questions in particular. I'll open it up for the rest of the board at this point.
I do have one question.
Go for it.
It's a, it's a small lot in that area. I know because I surveyed a bunch of them in there. You don't show where the house is on the lot, okay?
Yeah.
I have no problem with you doing that, but what we need you to do is, what I would want you to do is have, go have it surveyed or in somebody's stamp it, showing the house on the lot.
Okay.
And that, that's, so then, you know, let's, let's assuming you add the addition to it, you don't make it more non-conforming. Let's hopefully the house, because I think most of the lots in there are 50 by 100, pretty close?
Yeah.
Just some, so you're not making it more non-conforming.
It's like, it's a total, it's like, oh, close to 40,000 square foot.
This one, that one ain't a lot?
Yeah.
I still would rather, I would, I would like to see on a, on a plan. That's all I would want.
Okay.
Okay? That's all the questions. That's, you know, just to make sure you're making it, it's not.
Yeah, it's just, just a little bit shorter than required, right?
Right, but it, still, I'd like to see it on the plan. Okay?
This addition, is it on the driveway side?
Yeah, yes.
Another question. Is the addition accessible through the existing house? Or is it separate from?
No, yeah, it's joint, joint.
I, I don't see how.
Assuming the tree line is what you're.
Yeah, so.
Chris, Chris, follow up.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, how it connects main house to addition.
Chris, can I help you with that?
Sure.
Current access is to the side. He's proposing to shift access, access from the side to the front.
This is kind of the side that goes to the kitchen?
Great.
Okay, I see. Yep, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? What is the, I guess, I'm trying to figure out here, what is the setback on the side of the house where you're putting the addition? Obviously, the side deck is going to be gone and you're going to have this study in this bedroom there. What is the, unless I'm missing it someplace?
There is, there is no.
Yeah, was, do we know what the existing?
No.
Setbacks are?
No.
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 Okay. So, my, my only question is, that's, just based on what I can see from the measurements here, you are going to be closer to the sideline. I'm just not sure. Oh, actually, okay. So, it's 96 and 51. Am I reading this correctly?
I think he's getting closer to the street with the front porch.
Correct, it looks like that way.
Yeah.
He's getting closer to the right side, but there is a driveway on the aerial view that he's, between the driveway and the house addition's going to, so the driveway being on his land or not, I'm not sure, but he's not approaching on that driveway at all. It looks to me like 15 feet.
And if I'm reading this correctly, even with that, he's still 51 feet, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the real question is, it's an undersized lot and the front setback is within the setback, so.
Now, this proposed 21-foot setback on the front, is that 21 feet from the new proposed porch? Or is that 21 feet from the existing front of house right now?
Is that, that's gonna be like, right now, the old house or whatever, the same line to the making? We're not going to be anything further than house. It's only be going on its sideways, not like.
But you have a front porch in your plan, so that doesn't make sense. You have a new front deck, 6 by 10, so you are approaching 6 more feet of the front.
If that, that is just gonna be stair, not a deck, like.
Says new front deck, don't blame it, right? Why don't we just have him like Mr. Youngquist said, just have it staked out so we know setbacks are existing?
I have another question.
Sure.
So, Jurassic Museum bedroom, I don't know what the septic capacity is at that site. Do you know? Septic system?
Yeah, that's like, it's a, it's a, yeah, like 1500 something, yeah, something like that.
Okay, did the Board of Health look at this?
Yeah, the Board of Health, yeah. They sent a memo, they signed off on it. Yeah, so the real question is, it sounds like the board would like a little more clarity on some of your setbacks and what you provided us doesn't really give that to us. It shows the existing versus what you're proposing to do to the house, but it doesn't have any, any plans to show us how far you are from side setback, front setback, and the front one seems to be the concern because you're going to be, what do we say? You're only going to be 21 feet from the front property line. I guess my question to the board is if we do have that.
For me, I don't think it.
Are we worried about the 21 feet?
Truly not really. It's only front steps, I.
And I think there's, honestly, there's a number of houses on Main Street that are.
Yes.
Within that 40.
Yeah.
Feet, so.
I think for me, it's, it's fine. I was just curious of clarification, but to me, it doesn't. He's not adding this massive thing. It's a bedroom study. What else?
My question on the side setback's been clarified because it does stay here, 51 feet, so Board of Health would be the biggest concern as far as adding a second bedroom. They've signed off. What do you think? Do you want the plans or?
I, I have no problem approving, but I want to, I want him, before he gets a building permit, I want him to bring a plan in front of us. Showing us exactly what, I mean, you know, usually we allow people to take existing plans and whatever and add a little bit onto it. But here, we don't even have a plan. We don't have a site plan at all, not even anything close to one. If you want to condition it, he provides us.
Well, if we condition it, it would go to the building commissioner, because at that point, we're going to grant it, conditioning that he hasn't done. If we wanted, if we actually wanted to come back before us, we wouldn't. We wouldn't have proven at all. Is that right, Amy? While you're thinking about that, do we have anyone in the audience who has any comments regarding this petition? Come on up. Just state your name and address for the record and then ask away.
Sure. I'm in Gold of 19 Main Street, actually, the house right next to it. My biggest question is around the setbacks, especially on the side, as that's where our three bedrooms are. So, it just wasn't very clear from what I had seen.
Yeah, no, in, in the application, it does state that it's 51 feet. If you are on the side, that it's going to, that the addition's going on.
Yeah, we're on the side with it.
Yeah, so 51 feet, which means it's in the setback and we'll make, he'll have to abide by that anyways when he's building.
Absolutely, understood. That was my question.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
I'm agreeing with Jeff. I think he should come back with some more formal drawings showing so inaccurate distance between setbacks.
Are you, go ahead, you want to say something?
Why don't we just have a plan? Because if we approve it with no plans, those presidents, if we approve him, we got to put everyone else. So, let's make him bring a plan back and just so it saves everyone else and stuff.
Well, if we wanted to bring a plan back, we can just tell him to bring a plan back because we don't set precedent. Again, correct, Amy? I learned that one a long time ago. So, it sounds like the, at least a portion of the board would like you to bring back some engineered plans showing setbacks. You okay with doing that? If not, you can tell us no and we can either, someone could make a motion and it could not pass.
So, we need a, exactly, anti-gift, man?
Jeff, tell them what we want.
Well, I would like an existing conditions plan with the, with a stamp, PLS stamp on it. Don't call my office. Have a stamp on it. Just have some PLS, whoever. You got Zenith right up the street, you got.
For the survey people?
Huh?
From the survey?
Survey.
Survey, yes.
Yes.
Land survey.
Yeah, land survey. Get the land surveyor stamp on it, that's all you need.
Okay, okay.
Have him give you an existing conditions plan with a stamp on it. And I won't have any problem.
Okay, that's fine.
You okay with that?
I can do that.
Okay, so what we're going to do then is we're gonna, you're going to ask us to continue this hearing until next month. Go and get the plan, bring it back. As long as everything lines up accordingly, you should be good to go at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
How long's it taking? You want us to continue to next month, right?
I have no choice.
You do have a choice. I don't know if you're going to like the other choice, but.
I want to do earlier, you know, before starting.
So, who wants to make a motion to continue to October 16?
I make a motion to continue the hearing to October 16.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Got to get that one thing and we'll see you back on the 16th.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Second agenda item.
Can you go?
Yes. We want to go. Talk to you later.
Yep.
Okay, next agenda item, Residences at LaBarren Hills LLC Hearing, which is continued. So, I think we're at that point where the attorneys have talked about the permit and I'll wait for you to bring your crew up here, counsel. Okay, Bob, tell us where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Robert Mather. I represent the petitioner. We have been working on a decision for the modification of the comprehensive permit. It was drafted, reviewed by your counsel. We made several changes on it. I think the one that's before you now is the final version with one very small change. I did notice after we did it, there's a section that says on what days the operation can, can continue. We put in the holidays, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day, the major holidays where there would be no, no work. We forgot one. We forgot Independence Day. So, this is item number six. So, what I did was just redid that page and added Independence Day. Can you give those to? Other than that, we have an agreed, not agreed upon with the town council, I believe, as for the form of the modification. Unless anyone has any questions on it?
Um, Amy, are we good?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Amy Questle, Town Council. If you take a look at the decision, thank you. The, with all of the LaBarren phased decisions, we start with the procedural history and then we have our findings. And again, the findings, for example, you know, we kind of, the findings actually do kind of go through the procedural history because this phase has changed from when they first presented the phase to you to now. So, what we're looking at, we also, you know, we also go through the number of units per phase and I just wanted to remind you all that when they first came here, they were looking for additional units and they took that away. So, they are no longer looking for additional units. So, the amount of units that they are looking for was approved in 2004. So, you know, I know that that was a concern. So, that concern has actually been taken away by the applicants. And so, the decision goes through, it starts with the waivers that they need. You know, most of them are subdivision rules and regulations and some zoning waivers to allow the project to be constructed. With any 40B waivers are, they are allowed to ask for waivers. You are allowed to grant waivers. Again, you are dealing with, you're dealing with Chapter 40B, so you have to keep in mind that the presumption of affordable housing overrules everything except for a valid local concern. And to date, the Housing Appeals Committee has made a valid local concern, very, very hard to prove. So, if you are not at 10%, the presumption of affordable housing controls. And that is, that's really it. I put in, I put in conditions, for example, that the decision is, it's limited to just Phase 6, this decision. Anything that, anything that's not incorporated herein, the prior, the prior decisions all control. They have to, again, they have to, with the 40B, they, they only present to you preliminary plans. They do not present final plans until they're at the building depart, at the building permit stage. So, they have to present the building plans. There's, and normally Nate has 30 days to issue a building permit. Here, we have 60 days and we also have the opportunity for those to be sent out to a third-party reviewer. The third-party reviewer is funded by the applicant. We, they have certain things they have to deliver to us for the stormwater. We set up the construction, you know, noise, dust, vibration. We set up hours. We set up the holidays that they cannot work on. They have to, prior to the issuance of a building permit, they have to document and confirm the adequacy of their water supply. They have to, prior to the issuance of a building permit, they have to document the adequacy of their wastewater capacity. The final plans are going to be reviewed by the fire department with regard to hydrants, firefighting safety, adequacy of the access road and parking areas. They have to obtain any state permits that they need through conservation or DEP. The, and then we have the affordability conditions. So, they have 18 of the dwelling units will be affordable and the affordable units have to be distributed evenly throughout and they have to be, they have to be indistinguishable. They're going to be sold with affordable housing restrictions. They have to remain affordable as long as the property does not comply with zoning. In order to do that, we require a local affordability, a local affordable housing restriction in addition to the state affordable housing restriction. And then we have that the landscaping, if, if trees die, he has to replace them. That's about it.
Okay. I am going to follow up on one item you had mentioned only because I'm confident that we probably have some folks who are here to talk about it and I have been asked about it on numerous occasions since we last had this hearing going on. You referenced they need to document the water supply and wastewater.
Correct.
Who oversees that and what ability or authority does this board have in that capacity of oversight?
So, with wastewater, I'll start with wastewater.
Yep.
Wastewater is absolutely DEP. So, he is getting a permit, he's getting a groundwater discharge permit from DEP under 310 CMR 5, and that entire process is through DEP. Any enforcement, any inspections, all of that is through DEP. With regard to the water capacity, that is also mostly with DEP, but somewhat also with Taunton Water.
Okay, so we, we don't have any ability to dictate or stop the process or?
No, it's important to note, Mr. Chairman, they are not asking for any kind of waiver from you with regard to.
Okay.
Water capacity, so.
Okay. And I just, for the record, because I know we really can't hold you to anything, but I do know obviously that there, there is an issue with Taunton Ring of Water and you will continue to do what you can to work with the existing and future unit owners to try to help them rectify that issue that is not under our purview and honestly, it seems like it's more of a Taunton issue than, than our issue. Correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, they're just putting you on the spot, Mohammed, putting you on the record, which I know you don't mind. You've already mentioned that a couple of times, so.
We actually, you know, on many occasions, we said we'll be happy to support the homeowner association to work with the city of Taunton and anything that's required from us, we'll be more than happy to help within our capacity, right? I mean, if it's a reasonable request, we'll be more than happy to, to, to work with them.
Understood. Questions from the board in regards to what Amy just reviewed?
One thing I just want to ask is, the town bylaws for construction time? I don't know what they are. Are they stated here? Not stated. For the times, they just stated to work according to the town's bylaws.
What it means is they'll follow the same building guidelines for?
But they're stated somewhere?
Yeah.
I have it stated.
Okay. They are, they are stated.
Are we aware of those times?
Do not know them off the top of my head, but.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I mean, the only thing we could potentially do is make them.
I mean, they were asked by us till 7 o'clock, which I think is unreasonable. I prefer, I think 5 o'clock time is a better time. I think that's what the planning board has done in the past.
Chris, you happen to know what they are?
I don't, sorry.
You should.
I think, I think it's Board of Health.
That's right.
It's Board of Health regulation.
I can comment on that, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. The original approval mentioned 5 o'clock as a cut of time for, for any activity.
Yep.
And then we've had a couple of complaints at 5:01 where somebody was sweeping before they left. And then the police comes in and tried to stop the guy from finishing sweeping. And we came in front of the board and we waived that requirement and we made it whatever the, the town regulations allow. So, whatever the Board of Health allows. So, in the past, this board waived that requirement of working up to 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And, and it's, it's usually, you know, sunset comes in at most of the time, you know, and then people don't work anymore in construction. Most of the guys work until 3:30 and then they leave. Every now and then, you might have a painter, you might have somebody like that or, or, you know, a countertop installer or, or something that comes in after hours to finish one thing that they couldn't finish the night, you know, the night, the day before. They come in after their work to finish it. So, the board in the past waived that requirement and would just adhere to the town's, to the town's regulations.
Yeah, no, he's correct. I mean, we, we have done that in the past. I just don't know off the top of my head what, what they were, but rather than create, recreate the wheel, I'm assuming the thought process, at least for me, I'm not sure for the rest of the board who voted, was to keep it simple, let's just hold them to the same standard we would hold any builder in town.
In addition, Mr. Chairman, if the Board of Health were to tighten their restrictions, this would cover it. Whereas if we put specific hours and the Board of Health decided to lengthen those times, it, it wouldn't be covered. So, for, it was the, I believe the building commissioner was very much in favor of, of adhering to whatever the town regulations are. So, it's treated exactly the same as, as any other construction project. So, if they change the hours, this gets changed.
Correct. That's the reason we did that.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's no construction from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM, so it would be?
6 to 7?
Yeah.
Either work from 6 to 7 or don't work from 7 to 6, however you want to look at it. Other questions? Anything additional to add from your counsel?
Nothing other than to remind you to slip that other page in on the decision that we gave.
Yes, we'll make sure that you're not working on.
Thank you.
So, Amy, just to make sure I'm following procedure correctly here. Did we close in the hearing or did we close the hearing? I don't think we did.
No, we did not.
No, so.
You need to close the hearing tonight.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we can, we can take, folks in the audience have any questions or comments. I will start a line up at the podium.
That's right. Hi, my name is Bernadette Sarkar. I live at 17 Bunker Lane. And our concern is not necessarily what you're building. Mohammed is correct. He's been trying to help us to resolve the issue with Taunton Water. What we're concerned about is when they built this development, Taunton wants to be, put up a gate to keep us a closed system in the LaBarren development, which increases the risk of bacteria in the water. We have elderly people and children that live there. And in addition, it decreases the pressure. So, if we have a fire, we would have to call someone to come and open the gate. So if we have a fire, we would have to call someone to come and open the gate, so we'd have enough pressure to save that house. Now, we have small lots. If one house goes up, there's going to be multiple houses going up, it's going to be like California. So, and not only that, we don't even have a contact number to call. So if I have a fire in my house, whether it be night, holiday, who do I contact? The HOA doesn't have the information, I know that because I'm one of the HOA. So before they put this up, we would like this resolved, because I'm fearful that if they do this and put that gate up, we'll never get that resolved.
So let me ask a question. When you say if there's a fire, obviously, everyone knows you call nine one one, but who are you talking about specifically? You don't know who's calling.
Taunton says, the fire department has stated that we will not have enough pressure to go out the fire in the house. And Taunton says, we're not getting rid of the master meter, we're going to put up a gate. And if you have a fire, don't worry, you call us, and we'll send someone to open the gate so you have adequate pressure.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know about you, but I'm a little concerned if my house would be in existence by the time whoever shows up.
No, I hear you, I was just trying to clarify what we were trying to get at.
And then the other issue is the quality of the water. We're paying commercial rates, and our water is technically not. Well, it's not unsafe, but it can be potentially not safe, too. So now they think we should test our water, and also do whatever chemical treatments to clean our water on top of it, and top of us paying commercial rates. So that's our concern. So if they put the development in, the gates in, how are we going to get that resolved? And I know he has been helping us, don't get me wrong, he's been very kind about that. And this is, it's, but I hate to say, don't let him do it, but I don't, but we're trying to get, we were under the impression, we were going to get this resolved before he did this.
I, yeah, I apologize for that impression, but again, that's why I wanted to clarify it with counsel. Our, our hands tied, we can't do anything.
So there's nothing you can do for us.
Amy, I'm going to ask you to reiterate again.
No, the, unfortunately, the water is, it's not regulated locally. So it's nothing you can waive. You don't, you don't control it, so you can't waive anything about it.
So if Taunton's saying they don't want to play with you, you're kind of, you're not lucky. You have to figure out what alternatives there are to force Taunton to do something for you. But we have no leverage on Taunton.
Well, thank you for listening to my concerns.
No, you're welcome. This board did send a letter of support to the select board to tell them to do what they could, and I know the select board's been working to do what they can too, so. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Robert Goodwin, nine Sandy Circle. Currently the chairman of phase one of the development. We were understanding that we would not proceed with phase six until we resolve the issues that we have with the town of Taunton.
What's on the record?
When you say you wouldn't proceed, who wouldn't proceed? This board wouldn't proceed?
I bet. The Stonebridge agreed not to proceed with phase six until there was resolution with our issues with the town of Taunton.
The only, the only resolution that this board held off on moving forward with is to find out if we had any ability or if the responsibility was on Lakeville. If there's anything we could do, or we had any say in the matter, then we could exercise that ability. But again, we do not have any, that's outside of our purview. It's beyond outside of our purview, it's not even within the town's purview.
So knowing that we have all these issues with the town of Taunton, and we're concerned about the quality of our water, right now I don't even know if anybody's checking our water, if the water's any good at all.
The entity who can actually, who would, who could have impact on that would be DEP.
DEP...
Sir, I, just, you know, I, I can empathize with you, I can agree with you, I can walk on and on with you, but DEP is the only one who has that ability.
Well, DEP weighed in saying that we're not a public water supplier. And Taunton should be responsible for the quality of our water. But they haven't agreed to that.
And we have no oversight and no leverage with Taunton's board.
So you're basically saying you have no, something's missing. You've got to have more than empathy. What are we supposed to do?
All I can tell you is that DEP needs to resolve the issue. Based on what you're telling me, that they're not reacting, and they're saying it's Taunton's issue, DEP needs to work it out with Taunton.
Okay, but in the meantime, can we hold up on phase six?
We can't.
But Stonebridge agreed to.
I don't think they ever agreed on record to us that they were going to sell.
Yeah, they are on record as saying that. They were very helpful in getting a DEP.
No, I know they have, honestly, most of the people in here have told me that. Other people have told me that they've been very helpful and accommodating, but they've never...
But they're on the record of saying they would not move with phase six until this...
We don't have that anyplace on our, and they've never relayed that to this board.
How did I come up with that?
It's in your, it should be in your minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
You need it in writing, and if not, it would be constructively approved.
You can, tell them what you just told me, so everybody has it.
So the timeline for a 40B application is extremely rigid. And the only way the timeline can be extended is in writing. From the applicant, that writing gets sent to the ZBA, we then file it with the town clerk. And so any extension has been filed with the town clerk. And if we do not move forward or close this hearing, then his original application would be approved, constructively approved, which was the four buildings, which this board clearly was not happy with, because it's been significantly revised since they first came in with phase six. So unfortunately, the regulation seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero five set out a very strict timeline. We cannot deviate from that without authorization in writing from the applicant.
So that takes precedent over the quality of our water.
Thank you lawmakers.
Again, I'm not going to say it takes precedent, but we can't do something that we don't have the ability to do.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, just to clarify, if we turned around and said, nope, we're going to deny this, what happens, Amy? No, I'm just saying, there's nothing we can do. What I'm relaying to you is that we don't have the ability to do anything. Based on where we are in the process and what they've presented, if we say, nope, we're just going to arbitrarily, no arbitrarily, but we're going to deny it because of this water issue, then what happens?
Then the applicant appeals to the Housing Appeals Committee, and the Housing Appeals Committee will issue a permit with zero input from this board, zero input from the public.
And it goes back to the four buildings, they originally proposed.
It goes back to the original application, correct?
So as much as you don't want to hear it, it's actually a worse scenario than what you're, what in your mind, you're going to have to see go forward as it is right now, so.
But I'd like to hear from Stonebridge, so.
You can talk to the board, they'll react in a second, and then I'll ask them to follow up on any comments.
Thank you.
I will show you they will, so. Yes, ma'am?
Kelly, I'm one of them, LeBaron. I'm the chair of our water committee, and I'm also on the HOA board for the estates. Amy, you had said something at the beginning of this meeting about unless there's a valid local concern. To me, safe drinking water and also fire suppression would fall in the category as valid local concerns. I know you say you feel for us, but no one in the town of Lakeville. We are falling into the abyss after the abyss after the abyss. Everyone we've gone to has said, Taunton, hold the cards. I went in front of Taunton, and I presented information about how we arrived at the fact that we're not a master, that we, that the master meter was temporary. I pretty much got laughed out of that room.
So...
So my question, therefore, I'm trying to look at other ways. Question one is, what is the date that this meeting has to be closed? What is the deadline for the approval? To follow, to fall within the guidelines of the state of Massachusetts, what's that date?
So once an application is filed with the town clerk, we have thirty days to open the hearing. And once we open the hearing, we have a hundred and eighty days to close the hearing. We have continued this hearing multiple times, the last continuance is today.
Okay, and how many days is that?
Probably about three, over maybe five hundred.
Oh, it's well over, I think.
So we're already not in compliance with the state, correct?
Nope, we've gotten extensions.
Amy, look, so they've granted the extension, so we can work through as much of this as we can. They have been, I know you're not going to want to hear this, but they have been accommodating.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
And what I'm going to do at this point, only because, and I know people are probably not going to be happy with this, but we're not going to take any more water questions. And the only reason I say that is because we cannot do anything about the water.
So is it a valid local concern? Can somebody guide us as to how we address this with the state of Massachusetts? That we have a valid local concern, that it's not even Stonebridge, it was the previous builder came in, and now we don't, we have no, we have no guarantee of safe drinking water? We're being told that we have to go test our water ourselves, et cetera. I just want to know, who do I go to to address a valid local concern at this point?
DEP.
We've done that.
I don't know what to tell you, if they're not doing the job, if they're not happy with them. Excuse me, ma'am.
The 40B hasn't...
You come through the chair, you don't, it's not your turn.
But the 40B is not my concern. How, to, Amy had mentioned something about a valid local concern with regard to 40B, so how do I address that?
You, go ahead.
Water's, water, unfortunately, in this situation, water is not local, because it's controlled by Taunton and DEP. It's not controlled by Lakeville. It's the same with their septic. So if they were getting, if they were putting in a massive Title V septic system, that would be controlled by the local, by the Board of Health. So that would be a local concern. This board would have to issue waivers, et cetera. But they're putting in a wastewater treatment plan under the state, so it's no longer local, it's now a state concern. So I agree with the chair that DEP is...
Let me simplify this.
I just want to...
Your local concern, okay? If, as counsel said, it was something that our local Board of Health officers are, if it was something our local fire department does oversee, and they sent us something in writing that said, this is an extreme danger, people are going to get hurt because of this, then that's something we could take action on. We don't have that, and in this case, DEP oversees this. And as Amy pointed out, DEP also oversees wastewater, which I know hasn't come up, but that's come up in the past, too. So short of them sending us a letter, that's it, there's nothing else that can be done. So do you have any other areas?
So when it's closed tonight, we cannot appeal anything, correct?
Correct. Anyone else have a question other than water?
Ken McMillan, one Ironwood Lane. And I'm wondering, it's not, it's about the water, but I'm wondering if Mohammed, your group could be able to help us in maybe suing the town of Taunton? Because it helps you, too. You as developers, putting these homes in, houses that don't have tested water.
Here's what I'm going to suggest.
Yeah, do it after the fact.
Well, I mean, it can be after the fact, you guys, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure somebody would if I were, but I'm pretty sure if you talked to Mohammed about his willingness to do it after the fact, I just can't really, you know, we can't just be corporate.
I understand, no problem.
It's a fair question, and I have confidence he'll talk to you and do whatever he can. Anyone else? Anything additional to add, or any comments that you guys want to make based on what was stated?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just one comment on what Stonebridge promised to do. I remember the specific meeting with the board. It was when we were waiting for DEP to make the determination as to whether or not we're a public water supplier. And what we said is that we would not proceed, and I think you may recall this, it was in direct response to...
I recall, as I asked the question, and you said we will not proceed until we get the situation resolved with the public water.
With DEP, until DEP makes their determination.
Correct.
That's what we said. We...
I think I literally said I need a letter from DEP giving us who's responsible.
And I think the board will remember, too, when we got the determination, and I sent a copy to the board, I said, irrespective of what DEP has decided, my client continues to be willing to work with the residents to come up with a mutual satisfactory resolution. We never said we would not proceed with phase six until the water issue with the residents was resolved. It was with DEP, and it's been resolved.
Until we had a decision from DEP, that was what I was. And I have been told by folks in the audience, select board members, other people around town, that the developer has been doing what he meant to help with the situation. So, on that note, if we have nothing further, I will entertain, Amy, you have anything else to add?
No, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Anyone want to make a motion to close the hearing? What do we want to stay here all night?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second?
All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes or no? I didn't hear it. Oh, you abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, one abstention, closing the hearing. At this point, we do not need to make any changes other than to incorporate Independence Day into the decision, correct, Amy?
Yes, I've made formatting changes, that's it.
Okay.
And I'll get it over to you, Kathy.
What's our motion? To...
So the first motion would be the board, the following waivers. You're going to vote on the waivers. So the waivers, just quickly to go through the waivers, they are to allow for multifamily attached dwellings, which are not allowed in that zoning district. There's waiver for front yard, side back, front yard setback, and maximum and pervies coverage, which is fifty, and they're proposing fifty-five point six. Maximum stories is two and a half, they're proposing four. And the height is three, thirty-five feet, they're proposing forty-five feet. They're waiving a provision regarding buffer strip between residence, residential and business district to waive the thirty-two foot access point width requirement. They have a sixty-foot access width is proposed. They have sign, the sign is, it's allowed to be thirty square feet, they're asking for forty-two square feet. And then we get into all of the subdivision rules and regulations, which are generally, in my opinion, pretty minor. As you know, with the subdivision, they get really into the minutia. So we're waiving the minimum fifty, fifty-foot street right of way, they're doing fifty-five feet. They're doing the K pod berms, the inspections for prior, or the planning board to do an inspection, which means, which is because you guys are actually, it's your board, so it would be the building commissioner would be doing that. Monuments, approval of street names, street treaties, and planning board, you know, written approval prior to erecting any building, inspections from planning board, things like that. And then the, the common, the language that I put in every decision states that only the waivers expressly stated here, too, are the waivers that are granted. There's no blanket waiver, so there's no waiver saying if we forgot anything, they still get it. So if they need further waivers, they have to come back to this board. If a waiver is expressly, it's not expressly approved, it is denied. So those are the waivers. So you would want to make a motion to approve the waivers as presented.
Anyone who wants to make a motion to approve waivers as presented by town council?
I'll make the motion to approve the waivers presented by Amy, town council.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstention.
Okay.
Are you abstaining because you weren't at a hearing? Because if that's the case, you wouldn't be voting at all, that's why I'm asking.
I was not present, I saw your license, or the August, this came up before.
Okay. So then you would not, there would be no, you wouldn't get... Okay. So then you would not, there would be no, you wouldn't give a second?
You're not voting anyways.
You're not voting.
So that's why you're abstaining because you missed a meeting to do the, what's that law, that rule?
The Mullen rule.
The Mullen rule. Okay.
And then again, I did already go through all of the conditions, but then, so in addition to those waivers, we then have the conditions. There are, there are, I think it's 20, there's 23 conditions. Numerous of those have subparts, but they're all the conditions that I went through in the beginning of this meeting. So the next...
Yeah, we have all the conditions, yeah.
Yes, they're all there.
The ones we have in front of us, yeah.
So then the next, the next motion would be that the board votes to approve, or the motion to approve the modification Phase Six with the conditions set forth in this decision.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion as stated by Amy.
On the conditions, do we have a second?
I'll make the second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last motion is the motion to allow the chair to sign the decision.
Unless anyone else wants to do it, I'll entertain a motion to allow the chair to sign the decision.
I'll make that motion to allow the chair to sign the decision.
Second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Should I vote on that one? Can I abstain from that?
You have enough, so it's up to you.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for myself. So motion carries, three votes, one abstention. And I think that takes care of everything we need to take care of for this modification, correct, Amy?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck and do what you can to help Mohammed, please.
We will do it. And I thank the board. I know it's very stressful for everybody, I mean, the neighbors, the board, and ourselves. It has not been an easy process.
Not as stressful for the neighbors, but...
Thanks again. Good night.
Take care.
Thanks.
All right. The, we have minutes from the July 17th and we have both of them there, right? August 21st meeting that were included in our packets.
Is there anyone who wants to testify?
I'll make motion to approve on July, meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have the August... Which one is it? August, what was our meeting date?
21st.
August 21st. We have a motion to accept the August 21st meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
We have a second?
Second.
You were, that was the meeting you were at, correct? Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously for. And our next meeting is, I keep losing this thing, but when is it, Amy? Why do I keep this place on my agenda here?
16th meeting?
No, we actually have a meeting on Monday, October 20th for, wait a minute. We have Thursday, October 16th. You are correct. But we also, make sure you have your calendars, we have Simmons Hills on October 20th, which will be back here, formerly Rocky Wood stuff. Any further stuff items?
What date is that? October 20th?
October 20th, yep. So the 16th and the 20th. Okay, if we have nothing else, I'll state a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:55.